Good morning, everyone. May 14th, this is our special meeting for the budget workshop. So, can you check and see if Supervisor Johnson's on the phone?
Supervisor Johnson?
Yes.
He's on the telephone. Good morning Supervisor Johnson. Okay, we'll start this out with the county manager.
Thank you very much, and I'd like to welcome you all and thank the board for allowing us to have this budget workshop. Once again, the county has posted the entire budget on the county's website to provide greater transparency and accountability in county government. Now, what will be presented today is an accumulation of hard work, coordination, and cooperation by staff and elected officials alike. Without your leadership and commitment, we could not have accomplished the level of achievement which has resulted in the thorough work product we are now presenting to the board. Lastly, in addition to all the hard work by the county departments and their divisions, I've got to give a tremendous thank to Coral Lloyd and her staff for doing all the heavy lifting and coming up with the balanced budget documents which brought us to where we are today. Now, the budget workshop is scheduled to have six components. As a kickoff, I will provide you with opening comments, general recommendations, and a very brief overview of the proposed budget. From there, Ms. Lloyd will provide you with a more detailed financial overview of the county and staff recommendations, along with what to expect in the way of scheduling for our pathway to budget adoption. This will be followed by elected officials, courts, and department heads having the opportunity to address the board with any comments and answer any questions which the board may have regarding their proposed budgets, new initiatives, and capital purchase requests. Lastly, the board will have an opportunity to discuss the preliminary budget, and we recommend targeting for tenancy budget adoption sometime in June. So before turning this meeting over to Ms. Lloyd, I'll touch on a few topics Ms. Lloyd will be discussing and possibly one or two that she won't. Good news for the day, once again, actual expenditures almost across the board are less than those budgeted. Even though still pending, our luck has held this past year, and none of the unfunded tax case liabilities have come to fruition. And even though this year's revenues are coming in less than what was projected, revenues are going to be significantly more than last year's revenues. So far, we've been able to fund in our yearly cost of doing business to pay off our pension liabilities within roughly 20 years, and we've been able to fully fund three months of working capital equating to roughly $25 million to carry us through the year without borrowing. On the other side of the coin, as I said last year, we're certainly not flush with money again this year. Once again, our needs appear to be hedging towards outpacing our resources, which of course is the story of county life. Currently, our existing potential unfunded liabilities could approach $60-65 million. We also have remaining unfinished capital building needs equating to roughly two more years of the quarter cent sales tax, which as you know, sunset at the end of last year. In addition, we're currently only carrying a contingency for unexpected expenditures and opportunities of roughly 3%, which I believe is inadequate, and we have not adequately addressed dedicating funding for future building repairs, replacement, or maintenance. So, what do I see as a pathway for success for this year? It goes without saying, attracting and retaining exceptional employees is a real key to Mojave County's success. To that end, I recommend conscious steps to retain as much of our current leadership as possible. You have a fantastic group of directors. With this upcoming hiring of a new county manager, he will need all of their talents, dedication, and institutional knowledge to continue to make Mojave County successful. And of course, we always want to strive for continuous improvement, do not grow government unless absolutely necessary, continue to right-size where possible, making for a more efficient and effective organization, and continue to find ways of doing business smarter and to better utilize our resources provided. But I believe we need to make it an organizational priority to competitively compensate employees and look to institutionalizing periodic compensation plan. And only use resources, never capital unless absolutely necessary and unavoidable for funding operation and maintenance. Currently, administration's proposed priorities that has been presented today are as follows. We're trying to address increased demands that are being placed on our courts. We believe it's important to compete, to complete our building projects to fully, to fulfill facility needs, not the least being the county's existing courthouse, the courthouse remodel project, animal shelter, and the soon-to-be-acquired DES building. We believe it's important to reverse the tax reduction in the TV district to move towards balancing revenues and expenditures, increasing county's contingency to bolster county's financial security, included in this year's budget is a proposed compensation adjustment for our employees, and with the exception of the proposed minor return to competency increase for the TV district, balancing the budget utilizing existing revenues. How are we going to accomplish this in the year of the COVID? Projected capital in FY '19, budgeted and unspent monies equal $5 million. In FY '20, budgeted and unspent is equalling $3.6 million. With the quarter cent sales tax, the actual revenues collected exceeded our expectations by $1.5 million. We're proposing in this year's budget to utilize the sweep language in the legislation to sweep $1 million from the landfill closure and post-closure fund, and that gives us a total projected capital that's available to Mojave County at $11,100,000. On capital-proposed expenditures, we believe it's going to take roughly $400,000, .4 million dollars to complete the courthouse. We believe to do the animal shelter correctly because of off-site improvements required, we're asking for an additional half a million dollars to be placed in the animal shelter budget to bring that to a total of $2.5 million. We have $5.5 million for the courthouse remodel project of the existing old courthouse. For major capital repairs, we have a half a million dollars for jail repairs. On the DES remodel, we're looking at $1.2 million, and in contingency, we're asking that that be increased from $3 million to $4 million by $1 million, and that totals $1.1 million, or $11.1 million, which is exactly what we were proposing that we have available to expend. Now, I'll talk about revenue. Our FY '21 additional revenue projection is $3.6 million from the previous year. Additional expenses that the county is having and proposed expenses, there's going to be an additional half a million dollar increase in access costs. Projected O&amp;M increases that are uncontrolled are $1.5 million. The courts, because their increase in need for, because their increase in workload and need for juries and so forth and so on, we put $300,000 there for the courts. We have $1.1 million for a 2.5% increase for the county's employees. For director parity, for our grossly underpaid portion of the director salaries, we've got $100,000. And in economic development, to replenish the economic development fund and add one additional employee to economic development and a vehicle, we've got $100,000. So, that totals up to exactly the same amount as our additional revenue projections, $3.6 So every year, we truly lay the foundation for future levels in the overall efficiency and effectiveness of Mojave County and county government services. So every year during the budget process, the actual question that comes to board and before the people of Mojave County is, where will we be taking the county as an organization? With that, I would like to sincerely thank you supervisors for allowing me to work with you these past years and for your excellent leadership and dedication. It's, I can't say this enough, it's truly been a blessing. I'm also extremely proud of my elected officials and from a fine group of directors. Thank you for everything. And lastly, I want to recognize all of our wonderful county employees. Mojave County truly provides excellence in county government, and we certainly have excellent employees, and you're all exceptional, and I appreciate each and every one of you, and I want to thank you. And with that, I turn it over to Ms. Lloyd. Thank you.
Good morning, Director Lloyd.
Good morning.
So you'll be going over our financial services?
Yes, well, actually, I'll cover, I will bore you with all of the details of what is in the budget. So it really, there's a lot of slides here, but it really won't take us really that much time to go through this. I'm going to try to hit on all of the points that are in the budget rather than expect you to go through every single page of that. It is certainly my honor to be here this morning, and initially, if I were in your shoes and I looked at some of these projections, I would be saying, what is the matter with her? But in allowing me to go through some of the details with you, if you do not arrive at a similar conclusion that I have arrived at, then it would certainly be a great time to exchange where you see some fatal flaws in what we're looking at. So with that, I appreciate all your time and effort and hope to wrap this up by the first meeting in August with an adopted final budget of whatever that will end up being. So to get started, just in summary, what you're looking at is about a $327 million budget. We have about $98 million in operating costs in the general fund. As Mike has just laid out, we've got $10 million in one-time projects plus an additional $1 million that we're recommending to move into the contingency to bolster that, and about $215 million in all the other funds. What we're also proposing is to take a look at the TV district as he's mentioned, and we can review that again later, but if we adopt as a county an additional two cents in that district, what it will do is bring you to six cents and would allow you just to operate that as you currently are, no expanded services, but operate it right now without suffering any structural deficit. So, in going over some of the further details of what Manager Hendricks was just discussing, to do the revenue projections, I started out with trying to adopt similar assumptions as that of the Arizona Joint Legislative Budget Committee, and they have a finance advisory committee that meets quarterly, and I tried to listen into that discussion as well as follow-up with other items and other agencies on what we can expect with some of the impacts that we're suffering right now. So overall, it resulted in about a $2 million reduction in the forecast, and the basis of that really was this last quarter of the current year, and then clearly the first quarter of this next fiscal year. The losses primarily are, as you know, I don't need to preach this to you or whatnot, but basically in the tourism industry, the restaurant industries, categories that provide personal services, some of the brick and mortar retail shops have been closed, fuel sales in some areas have declined. However, what we've all discovered is that some of these losses of those categories that make up about 30% of the entire state shared sales tax base, that some of these losses have actually been offset with increased sales in hardware stores somewhat, even in some of the auto sales are actually up, and internet sales was just a blessing that we didn't even know it was going to be. So, in total, while the projection was a reduction quite a bit of this 30% sector, like some of the restaurants are down 90% for those sit-down dining areas, but for the fast food and drive-through, there's been at least a, it's at least static, in some cases they have declined, but somewhat, there's been an upturn to some of them. So, the Finance Advisory Commission basically was looking at a decline overall of about 2.9%. So, some of that, I don't want to bore you to tears with this yet, but some of that, how would that, should I not show 2.9% from Mojave County? Well, I would if I had started with the state's number for this budget year, but in trying to be conservative, I started with a lower number. So even with their projection of a loss, I can still come out flat with last year's actuals and be good. The recovery that they're projecting that would come in the later quarters of next fiscal year was 3.3%, so I tried to adopt that back into those projections in order to arrive where we are. That projection I used, though, on last year's, on the current year's budget number, which again is lower than where the states started. So if that makes sense, we're not going to necessarily see the same, we're going to see this exact same loss, but it's not going to mean negative money from Mojave County because we didn't start with as high of projections for the year. So, I hope I've covered that pretty well. What that will mean, I've got in a later slide for the state shared revenue, is that I'm actually predicting the increase, before it would have been about $2 million combined with all the state shared revenue between sales tax and auto lieu, and I scaled that back to about $500,000. So it was a couple hundred thousand dollars more in state shared revenue from the sales tax portion and about $300,000 in auto lieu tax. In total, then, on this slide, you can see that I've also looking at a $2 million projection for the property tax revenue for the general fund. While this is actually a 5% increase in assessed value and a 5% on the budget, again, it's only a 1.4% increase over the projection. So mathematically, it's still, because of the conservative nature of what we've been doing, it allows you to be in a pretty good situation in looking at your expenses this coming year. Then we're also looking at overall about a million dollars, it's just shy of a million, but about a million dollars in estimated user fees, the court fines and fees, our utility franchise fees, and we have some very probable opportunities in economic development that are increasing that sector and the development services area. So those are all wrapped into that total to make $3.6 million in additional revenue available. Mike has already gone over the recurring resources, how they would be utilized in the coming year. It's nice to sometimes be able to see it with your eyes to match what we've just heard. Again, it's a half a million dollar increase in the access. There's about $300,000 in initiatives and contract increases within the courts. The million one for a 2.5% compensation increase, about $100,000 for the director's parity where this would be applicable to directors that are paid below the market comparisons, but excludes those that are currently at market. Puts back in another 100,000, actually it's 110,000 for the Economic Development Enterprise Fund to put that back where we were, and the million five in the other contract increases such as, well particularly in the jail healthcare area and some of the jail food costs, we've got $200,000 extra in there for building maintenance, and $400,000 is about the impact from internal services. So again, that's your $3.6 million. From the $11.1 million in resources that the manager just opened with, I don't need to review that again, but it's nice to, for me at least, to see, maybe I'm a visual learner, but that's where we're coming up with those resources. And the uses, again, are laid out there. On the DES facility, I would add that this is budgeted with an intent to bring over about $750,000 from the RICO funds to be pooled with 1.2 million of the county's resources in order to remodel and relocate the county attorney's office. And again, it totals $11.1 million in one-time resources for one-time uses. So in getting into some of the details, I've covered the details of how we came up with the state shared estimates, I want to go over the property tax as well with you a little bit. Again, in my projections, I'm using just the flat tax, no reductions, no increases. It's a 1.4% increase over the current year projection. It includes, a million dollars of the two is basically from new construction that's coming onto the rolls for the first time, and then the remaining million would be from our existing tax base. And maybe it was just good timing, but I recent, in the release of the Auditor General's report for our financial statement, in their highlights, they noted that the combined property tax, so that's all of our districts for Mojave County, Mojave County's actual districts, that the property taxes in 2019 that were collected were $10 million less than the property taxes available in 2010. So that kind of puts a little bit of that in perspective with where the board, at least since 2010, has been pretty conservative and careful with the impact of property taxes on our citizens and businesses. The net assessed value is derived basically from data from two years ago, and it is also interesting to note that the assessed value that we're looking at for this coming year is still less than the assessed value in 2008 and '09. So while it's returning, it is still not there at this point in time, including the new construction. To refamiliarize you with what basically the limitations on property tax, that the maximum levy can only grow by 2% plus new construction each year. So Mojave County, again, is in a really good position because we are 50 cents below that maximum tax rate. So that is worth about $10 million in the event something should occur that you would need that, you can access it and utilize it far into the future if needed. Forgiving any incremental adjustments each year, this is just from me as a finance director, that there are some clear impacts, and one of those is that it tends to reduce your truth in taxation rate in subsequent years. And so for example, in 2016, 2017, the rate, the TNT rate was $1.98. This coming year, the rate is going to be dropping to $1.89. So the difference between the assessed values and really not pursuing any incremental tax increase provides this difference of revenue opportunities for the county in the event that you clearly need to address some of the department needs. With all of that being said, if we do just simply continue with the $1.94 that is being levied right now, we're still going to have to have TNT rates hearings, and you're still going to have to advertise for those TNT hearings, even if that rate stays the same. And I know it can be confusing, we don't all necessarily agree on the philosophy, I would say we do not, but it is prescribed by the statutes, and we will go, we will go through the exercise depending on what all of you vote on within the final budget for the tax rates. I know that you get calls and emails and questions from constituents, and it's difficult, it is kind of a difficult concept, but I think that all of you really do pretty well at explaining what the differences are. The reason that the notice says that we've increased taxes is because, to be really clear, we will receive $2 million more than we did the prior year. A million dollars of that is going to be from the existing people and businesses, so therefore their tax has gone up, they've contributed more, but the rate has not changed. All right. I've already gone over the details of establishing the state shared revenue projection. Again, it was pretty limited. For the current year, we've obviously received April's revenue, and just as a, as a note, the amounts that came in exceeded what the Finance Advisory Committee's estimates were. So that's a really good thing. Overall, Mojave County's hit for just the month of April was a decline of 5.7% over the prior April's collections. So year to year, at this point in time, we've collected about $22 million in state shared revenue. Mind you, we give 11 million of that back, directly back in excess, but we have to report it in total. So we've already collected 22 million. Last year, it was about 24 million. We receive about $2 million a month. So, just to come out flat with last year, which is what I use as a projection, I had to decrease the next two months' estimates by 40%, and there's, that's not going to happen. We're not going to lose 40% of all the sales tax revenue in the next two months, but again, it just kind of solidifies, I hope, with all of you that I try to be careful in making a projection that was too rosy or too gloomy, and as we progress into particularly the second quarter of next fiscal year, then we're all going to know a bit better what we should continue to look forward to for the remainder of the year. So overall, in getting started with the expense side of it, unless you have any particular questions about revenue pieces at this point in time. Okay.
Madam Chairman.
Supervisor Gold.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Coral, the, I feel that the comparison of the eight and 10 property tax revenue with, or valuations with present is fallacious. That was a real estate bubble that was created by bad federal policy. So to compare that to reality, I guess it was reality, but it wasn't normal, really doesn't give us any information that's actually usable, because that was just a ridiculous period of inflation. And actually, I hope we never see that kind of inflation again because it caused utter chaos to the economy. But it's just a sidebar comment. I appreciate you including it, but for me, it doesn't really give me any information that I could use.
No, the point being just to allow citizens to know- No, the point being just to allow citizens to know that we're staying under those inflated numbers, although they're starting to grow again.
Right.
And as you really know, the cap for increase, there's now a cap on the increase. So it won't, it's not possible to increase assessed values by 7%, 10%.
Right. Thank you.
And thank you for your comments.
Coral, can, can I just make kind of a comment, maybe a question on the TNT tax? That is so bizarre. I don't fully understand it. I doubt if anybody here does, and you have difficulty explaining it. Is there any chatter about changing the way that is worked in the state legislation to kind of make it more simplistic to where, where people don't think that we've raised their taxes because we're having this TNT hearing? And I know last time we did that, at least one supervisor posted on social media, "We've raised your taxes." And, you know, is there any way to, to change the wording or the way that's done other than legislatively?
No, it would have to be legislatively. And I think it's been kicked around a few times, and there's quite a strong resistance to changing that language.
Okay, because we believe we're doing something good for the people, but, but when it comes out in writing, it doesn't sound so much.
Right, it absolutely doesn't, yes.
So Supervisor Gold, since you were in the legislation, do you have any insight on that?
Sure.
Please share.
The, I actually voted to send truth in taxation to the voters. The voters then approved that, so it's voter protected. So the only people that can change it are the voters, which aren't going to change it. Because the voters realize if their check for their property taxes is larger next year than it was this year, that's what we call a tax increase. The board actually sets the rate. So by not taking action to reduce the rate, if you have inflation in property taxes, you are raising their taxes. The confusion comes from when politicians claim that they're not raising the taxes. That's where the real confusion comes. So if we would just get, quit trying to confuse people by saying it's not a tax increase, it's not a tax increase, it's not a tax increase, the people would not be confused. But I guarantee you, when they, when they write that check, those of, that do write that check, because a lot of people, the, their property taxes are paid out of their escrow account. And I also thank the legislature for forcing the treasurer to send a tax bill to each and every person that owns property so that they know that their taxes are up higher. They know that that's, that's a tax increase. So no matter what we call it, you know, just because we decide to call a dog a cat, doesn't make that dog a cat.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm not sure that cleared it up for me, but thank you for trying. Okay.
I'll break out the Glenn Beck whiteboard and I'll get it if you want, but.
Or maybe some Kleenex boxes. I don't, I don't know.
Madam Chairman.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Johnson, go ahead.
I, I think we might be misleading a little bit to the people because what we're saying is we're collecting the same amount of revenues. So when you get your tax bill, if an area has gone down in value, their tax bill will go down considerable compared to somebody in an area where their property or values have gone up. So they could see an increase, but overall, it's not a tax increase on their property tax to everybody.
True, thank you. Supervisor Watson.
Thank you, Chairman Bishop. I have a little bit of a problem in enjoying the conversation that I just heard from Supervisor to my left. There's been no mention that in fact that we have no quarter cent sales tax, which I believe was almost $6.5 million. So if we were to assume that there's an increase due to the truth in taxation, let's not forget that there's no quarter cent sales tax, which is $6.5 million, which is a lot of money. And that $6.5 million could have gone to a lot of different projects that are going to be needed in the upkeep and maintenance of all our buildings that we've been able to build over the last 10 years. So I just wanted to make that point, that our citizens will be experiencing that decrease of $6.5 million because there's no longer that quarter cent sales tax. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, Carl?
Okay. So in kicking off the expense portions of this, let's start with the sheriff's office. There was an overall increase with all of their divisions of about $400, $500,000. The sheriff's office had submitted initiatives for compression and reclassifications, but withdrew the request given the overall economic climate and outlook. And rather, we've included their, all of their employees within the two and a half percent compensation increase, that calculation that we've done overall. We did work with, directly with the sheriff's office to go ahead and fund three new sworn positions. Four would have been desired, but I wasn't able to fund the remaining one without an increase related to that. Basically, the three new sworn positions in total, with all the equipment and everything, are about $340,000. And the way that we did this was by taking seven really hard-to-fill positions within the jail that are continually vacant. At times, they've had more than 20 positions vacant. Right now, they've actually had a hiring of some new officers and detention officers in training to fill quite a few of those, but there are still, I believe, about 10 vacant. So this would essentially use savings from seven of those positions to fund three new deputies within the sheriff's office. Overall, we don't believe that that's detrimental in the long run to the jail operations. We're not eliminating those positions. And if those positions are needed to be filled again, then they could come back to the board and put position, put personnel back into those positions. And this allows them to still enhance their public safety operations with, by being budget They also had additional, other than deputies. They had some other position requests, and again, those were withdrawn as well. Their gear and equipment that they've included in the budget this year that are new additions include substance test kits that would enable the deputies to be able to perform field tests. We've got some additional training that is needed. The sheriff's office now has to pay for the Western Arizona Academy, the training for the new recruits. Mobile data charges are in there that were previously paid by the Communications Division. We have an initiative to add a volunteer group, and there's not very much in terms of cost for that. The persons that would be volunteering for that unit would essentially be reviewing cold case files and seeing what they can do to renew, put resources to trying to solve those cases. They've also asked to add a computer up in the Colorado Strip area, to add e-warrant license fees, which are necessary for some compliance reasons. There were certainly contract increases throughout their budget, which is going to be inherent in all the future years for which we've done our five-year projection. They need to update their geo system for compliance with Arizona requirements. We've got a radio system in there for the Meview area and a mobile command speaker and microphone so that the SWAT team can more effectively deal with situations, particularly with hostage situations. And then their grant and fee funds include monies for transport vans. And believe it or not, in two slides, we were able to review the items that are in the sheriff's office budget that are new and different. The county attorney and the legal defense budgets include, I'm just going to walk, walk you through as these are written. It includes just a little bit of moving people around with refunding two previously unfunded Attorney One positions and reclassifying another one. It is budget neutral because the savings are going to come from a reduced civil attorney that's currently full-time would go to part-time. And then they would supplement that with fill-the-gap funds in order to achieve those three or four positions. I've already mentioned the use of the RICO monies for the DES building. And in the Legal Advocates Office, for all of the public defense side, really, their budgets were very flat. There was an initiative for $5,700 for staff to travel to do oral argument before the Supreme Court. And that will either be sometime this coming fiscal year, and it may even, my understanding is it may even go into the next fiscal year. With the courts, it ended up rounding out about $337,000. It includes a $20,000 increase in the bailiff position, which is basically moving that from a part-time position to a full-time position. The purpose behind that initiative or the request is to fully comply with security needs. Well, I shouldn't say fully at all. I should just say to comply with security needs and some standards that were adopted by the AOC a few years ago. They have been working toward arriving at least the minimum point for that. And I know that we've discussed this previously, and in addition, not just one bailiff position is going to fully allow them to comply with that, but it's a start. There are some increases in there and reclassifications for personnel. It includes a step increase for the admin program specialist and one for the HR manager. That is due to additional responsibilities that they have assumed over the last 18 months, as well as technical skill set that they've had to increase. The HR technicians, I've lumped together both the court and the probation. And again, similarly to the other two items, this is a reclassification, actually, to move them up with parity to the request coming from the county's HR side with their technicians. And they've done some market analysis and the skill sets that are required in order to justify the request for these reclassifications. The Superior Court has also submitted what totals to about a $71,000 parity adjustment of their IT staff. The, how that is made up is basically calculated as $60,000. We would need to transfer over from the general fund to Court IT to cover the amount that has been submitted. And they've also requested that they terminate the 5% split funding of the Court IT Director that we currently are paying part of his salary out of a fee fund. So that would come over, and that total amounts to about $11,000. Part of this is warranted or requested regardless of what the county IT does, but the, these numbers, if approved, would need to be fine-tuned by the time that we get through the final budget, that their intent is not to exceed the county IT staff compensation, but just to bring them up to comparison with the county's side of that. There's also, on the court automation side, there's $7,300 increase in the court automation MOU. That's an annual increase and was approved by the Board of Supervisors, actually, last year. It's a five-year agreement. In total, the court, the Superior Court and the Clerk of the Court would like to move some of their, I'm going to say, third-party costs for security and any outsourced court reporting that they do and jury costs that are all related to court, actual court activities inside the courtroom, to the mandated budget. So we have the Superior Court operations and we have a mandated budget. That mandated budget really encompasses jury-related type of costs. However, if the court reporter positions are filled, so my understanding is that they have at least two vacancies right now, we're having to outsource that to a third party. If those positions are filled, or if one of the positions is filled, that we would then want authorization to move the monies back out of the mandated third-party payments back into court operations to account for our own county employee if that occurs. In the Clerk of the Court's budget, that budget includes about $6,300 in reclassifications of people that are actually at minimum wage. So right now, they're at minimum wage or right, the, they may be slightly above minimum wage by 25 cents, 30 cents. But the recruitment for those folks on the salary scale starts at $11.49, I think. It's $11 and change. So it's actually below minimum wage. So we need to move that entire classification up so it's above $12, or at or above $12 an hour. They included a request to move a part-time clerk to a full-time court services assistant, and so the $12,000 reflects doing that. And then they've also got a, a neutral cost where they would combine two part-time clerks that are working right now into one full-time position. The budget includes a request to add a judicial assistant for the Clerk of the Court. And we would do that in mid-year. There's no reason to add that now when they're not relocated into the new building and budget for that and when we're not going to be spending that. If this were approved, just note that this following year, then it would be at least $50,000 for that position. And then in their fee funds, they have noted some equipment replacement and items that they need to upgrade. Moving into the probation area, they have a request to bring three positions that manage financial and office-type responsibilities to be equal pay entitled to the county finance department. It would encompass about a $3,000 cost to bring the probation finance manager up to the financial services budget analyst senior position. That, in, in the finance department, we are requesting that, that budget position right now is called an accountant senior, and we want to change the title. It's in a range 18. We want to move it to a 19 and call it a budget analyst senior. So the court is looking, or the probation department is looking basically at mirroring doing that. They also have about $7,700, which would move a grant-funded services assistant senior to be equal to an account specialist in the finance department. And then a, an assistant in the probation department to an office specialist position that would be comparable to our department. And that cost would be about $3,300. They also are asking to use grant funds to refund a deputy probation officer two position that was frozen a few years ago. This would be no impact on the general fund for that, and it's warranted based upon caseloads. And they have to justify that to the AOC. And kind of unusual turn of events this year, the state of Arizona withdrew their provision for providing at least four vehicles for probation programs locally. So Mojave County needs to absorb the cost of those vehicles. So we've added four vehicles into the vehicle replacement fund and then spread that cost over five years into the probation department. And we would recollect that money every five years. Juvenile detention includes comparable increases in their budget, is what they're requesting, to what the sheriff's office did with the jail detention officers and administrator. It also includes some rain, range changes for those positions. But basically, they're trying to, again, do a parity adjustment to be very comparable to the adult detention center. And then they've got a little bit of money in there to replace a dryer at the juvenile detention center. The most significant items in the justice courts are to move about $60,000 in security costs. costs this year that are paid right now out of a fee fund. If they continue to do that, that fee fund is going to go into the red. It is not sustainable and therefore we've moved that for budget purposes back into the general fund. They also experienced this current year in January, January of 2020 then, the judicial productivity credits were recalculated and there's been a compensation change, I think in North Canyon Justice Court. Did HAVESU's also increase? At least, at least North Canyon. So for any change that you might see when you're looking at their budgets and it's like, why did that happen? Why is that higher? That's why. So that occurs in line with the statutes. We do an analysis and finance to make sure that that happens and we also receive information from the state of Arizona on doing that. And that wraps up the courts. The Recorder's Office includes some step increases that would impact just some of the positions in both Recorder's Office and one position in voter registration. The request to provide these increases are because of retention efforts, if you will, that they've, she's experienced quite a bit of turnover in the past, wants to retain these employees and get them off of the very bottom of the schedule for that office. The recorder would be able to achieve this, it would be budget neutral, from the recurring revenues that are available right now to offset those expenses. And then in the surcharge fund that the Recorder's Office also receives from fees, they've included the continuation of the records preservation projects and then they have about $25,000 of their maintenance agreement costs and software utilization. In voter registration, again, it includes the retention increase for one person there and also the budget's gone up considerably noting that there's a primary election and a general election this coming fiscal year. The treasurer did not have any new initiatives and there's actually a reduction in the bottom line of about $14,000. On a very cosmetic item, if you will, we have the numbers incorrectly in your totals, but a couple of the line items, we have to make an adjustment just for presentation sake, but it doesn't change the bottom line. It's just basically this line item needs to be increased to $4,500 or something and this one needs to be adjusted to another amount. Those will come before you in the tentative budget, but it does not change the bottom The assessor's office includes a portion for the split fund increase for the office specialist that the recorder is requesting. They would like to retain, they actually asked for increases in the training budget, but worked with county management and finance to redo the numbers to at least just retain their training budget. They need that for new certifications as well as progressive professional development. The biggest item that they have is a capital investment in a just-appraised software. It would automate and improve their title transfer images that come over and are utilized in the camera system. They come over from the Recorder's Office. It would certainly reduce the backlog of transactions that are, happen, if you will, when sales occur and they're looking at ways to address making that more efficient. The other options are to add more staff, in which case there would still be more opportunity for mistakes as much of this information is keyed into their system, directly into their system. And what's happened in the past is that occasionally tax bills are actually remitted to the old owner, old property owners and then results in additional costs to track that down. But that's really all that the assessor had in there, otherwise it was very flat. In general administration, again, we have a million one in there for the compensation increase. The calculations do include all departments, including elected official departments. At this point in time, based upon the projections that we have, we can afford to do this, it's HR is always going to support and tell you that, and I guess so should, I shouldn't say HR, so would I, that a consistent compensation plan is an important tool in recruitment and retention and I'm sure that the board may want to further discuss what we have proposed in there, but we do have that in there at this point in time. There is $100,000 for the director's parity adjustment as Mike had mentioned, that it would really only impact directors that are below the market. They used a couple of different surveys to do that comparison. It was both the ACO and the Arizona League of Cities and Towns. It would include three reclassifications that were recommended. It was to the clerk of the board would be moved up two ranges. The economic development director would move two ranges and the assistant to the county manager would move one range and the title change would occur to that position to become an administrative services director. On the next page of this slide, I actually decided, why not just be very transparent and just show you who that involves, the positions that are involved and the amounts and where they would be in the step plan. So you can certainly look at this later, but you can see where those pay recommendations result in the total. I actually ran, excuse me, or asked our staff to run some W-2 comparisons and compare those W-2 earnings to department, these department directors. And there are actually people that work in the sheriff's office and the jail that make more than some of your current department directors in total because of overtime. So that's been included. The general administration budget also includes $70,000, that's an estimate for redistricting costs next year. We had an increase in liability insurance and there's been an increase in workers' comp anticipated as well. However, it looks like ASAP is going to bring that amount down a little bit. Most of the impact for the workers' comp increase was a result of sheriff's deputies cost, all police across all of the agencies, not just for ASAP but other on the city side as well. But they are bringing those down a little bit and we'll put those into the tentative budget once we confirm up those numbers. There will be a slight reduction in the Arizona Department of Revenue cost shift, which we'll also bring forward in the tentative budget. I did check about why we have to pay anything if we no longer have a sales tax and it is by statute that we continue to participate under the consideration that we do receive state shared revenue, state shared sales tax, so department revenue is still working a little bit on Mojave County's items, although certainly not much with, I shouldn't say certainly not much, I don't work there, but not as much as they were when we had a sales tax. There are, there's a little bit of an increase in the membership and dues in that budget and I went ahead and laid them out there for you so you could see what that entails. I think it's about an $8,000 increase this year. Under the county administration, county manager, that includes an initiative for, step increases for support staff. That department has expanded their span of control by three departments. They do financial aspects for both the economic development and communications director divisions. They're doing the oversight and financial reporting of the animal shelter now. And so this initiative would actually compensate them. It's a 5% increase would compensate them for those additional duties that they've taken on and the increased workload and responsibility. And then we've also increased that budget to include funds that would be available to you should you need them in your manager contract negotiations.
Madam Chair, may I ask a question?
Supervisor Angus, go ahead.
So we're hearing a lot about reclassifications and step increases. Is that in addition to the 2.5 overall raises?
Madam Chairman, Supervisor Angus, any of these employees that are listed for increases would not be eligible for the two and a half percent.
So it's all of these and there are quite a few and everybody else gets a 2.5?
That's correct.
Can I just ask a quick question? I know maybe this is supposed to be for later, but in the last two years, how many, how much raise has the average employee received? Because I believe, Mike, it's been at least almost 10% in the last two to three years?
It would be, well, the one year, last year was two and a half percent for most employees.
And the year before was, because they died up to the 5% that you gave for the hot jobs and that kind of thing. I mean, made up for it.
So seven and a half for anybody.
About seven and a half in the last two years.
That had not.
So this would be a 10% raise in probably two and a half, three years and then all of the reclassifications. And the reason I ask, and I mean, it's obvious, the elephant in the room. I mean, I know when you were first doing this that we were in a different situation and everything was good, but now we are in an unknown where thousands of people have lost their jobs and it just seems uncomfortable to be talking about giving people raises when so many people out there have lost their jobs, are trying to pay their mortgages and their tax bill. So this whole, I just, this whole conversation is very uncomfortable for me as a representative of the taxpayers who are sitting at, I guess, when I sit here, I represent the taxpayers, not, not the county employees. Our great county employees, sound like Trump there, we love them, but I just needed to interject that in this conversation that, because what I'm hearing is, you know, like 70% of all the requests are, have to do with salary and things like that. So I just wanted to put that on the record.
And Madam Chairman, I understand that that is a concern. I do want to point out that county government was designated as an essential service and our employees, the policies that the board set forth were fair, but required our employees to work, period. And that meant a lot of our employees were forced into interaction with the public, even though we took what we believed to be adequate precaution and they kept the county functioning. I believe you would have to say that you received very few complaints. I received very few complaints about the services that were provided, so I commend all of the employees on the job that they have done to keep the county running and keep the constituents served here in Mojave County and keep services going. The other thing that I believe is incredibly important to point out is that the county is operated and the employees have operated through rightsizing, through downsizing and the only way we've been able to do that is to try to retain our most talented people and I believe we've done a good job of that. So this, when, when funds are available, I believe it's incredibly important for us to look at not only our leadership, but our elected officials, but mostly our county employees, because there's, they're the ones that allow us to keep the tax rate the same and not have to raise taxes and continually look at increasing headcount, because that's not what we've been doing. We've been doing our job with the same amount of people or less for years and years and our employees deserve to be recognized for that and rewarded, I believe. And by doing so, we are, have a better opportunity of not only retaining the employees that we have, but not having to hire new employees and pay for the training to train those up to speed so that they can function in the same capacity as the existing employees. But thank you, Madam Chairman.
And Madam Chair, and Mike, I do.
Supervisor Angus, go ahead.
I do, you know, understand that you have different, you know, agendas and different ways of looking at how this should be run, but I represent the taxpayers and I do believe our employees have done a great job, but they have been compensated and rewarded and because you made it kind of sound like we haven't, but we have. I think we've been very generous over the years and again, I always have a little issue with, you know, what, what these surveys and the comparisons that we do, because we're a very unique county here, but I think we'll be speaking about this at another time. Thanks.
Madam Chairman.
Supervisor Gold.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I take an issue with that the county employees were forced to work. The 14th Amendment outlawed slavery, so anybody that's working is working because they chose to work. And county employees should not be insulated from what happens in the real world. People were clamoring to go back to work. It was the governor that would not allow them to go back to work. Everybody that I know that didn't work at a restaurant or a bar was still working and most of those folks worked with the public. I worked with the public. So we continue to do the same thing that county employees did and I would argue that the things that the public have to do probably put them at a greater risk than most of the county employees were. So we're all in this together, folks, and a lot of times I see these comparisons and now we're even comparing county, one county employees in a division to other county employees. So we're no longer comparing these folks to the private sector and in reality, when we talk about salaries, we should be comparing them to the private sector, not to other government agencies, because a lot of times that is not reality and we need to remember that we work to serve the public and serve the taxpayer, that we're not above those folks. But this is solely my opinion and may not represent the opinion of anybody else in the room, but it might. Thank you.
All right. Please continue.
Okay, thank you. The animal shelter I have on my list next, it includes projections based upon our current year actuals. So there is an increase in the professional services and medical line items and those have been essentially offset with donations that have been greater than we ever expected, fortunately, and an updated agreement with the city of Kingman. And clearly we've included the two and a half million dollars then for the facility. The major maintenance on other county facilities does include $200,000 transfer over that fund. It would bring that total budget up to $800,000. The adult detention center facility includes about $54,000 allocated for inmate damage repair and some other replacement and contract cost increases. The major maintenance fund, which we've designated as a separate fund for very more expensive items, includes about $476,000, which we will be taking out of these one-time monies to cover these costs. It includes the CCTV, which is the closed captioning electronic system, upgrading that, a water softener, HVAC repairs and replacements, cooling tower maintenance, the solids interceptor, I believe is related to sewer, flooring and some other various items. Internal service impacts to the general fund is basically information technology. They need to upgrade to the Microsoft 365 licenses and technology and they also need to replace some, some course switches in various areas that are about eight years old. The communications budget includes an inserter folder for the mailroom and then some new telephone replacements. The rest of these should probably go through pretty quickly for this period. The elections department clearly has some increased costs that are offset with revenue associated with the elections this coming year. The medical examiner contract increase was just approved by the board the last meeting. Procurement has a reclassification of a storekeeper to a warehouse tech and there's justification for that based upon the actual duties that this person has undertaken and assumed more responsibility. They have also compared that to the 2018 survey for the NIGP compensation study, just for procurement people out in the, out in the world. The. The finance department includes a reclassification of the, of two positions. I've already spoken about the budget analyst. We'd also like to reclassify our office assistant senior to an office specialist who is performing duties of an office specialist and is currently working and assigned as our payroll specialist, if you will, going through the implementation of the electronic timekeeping software transition. So she's working directly with the IT representative and the HR representative on that role to eventually get moved over to there. The requests for those reclassifications in the finance budget are budget neutral because our new hires have been hired lower than we previously had budgeted those positions. I've also included $20,000 for the vendor self-serve module as a measure of protecting the county against cybersecurity issues related with vendors. So we've had some near misses, even in, here in Mojave County. We've had some, they've had some strikes in some of the other cities and counties throughout Arizona and certainly across the United States and the world, where we've been contacted by, basically via email advising of a request for a change. There are limited resources, if you will, that are available to us to go out and see if the email that we received is really from the true vendor, or whether it's a scam. That includes picking up the phone and calling the company to see if they sent us an email requesting that we change their banking information for their electronic transfers, for their payments of vendor bills. Anyway, so I won't go, for a second there, I wanted to bore you with all the procedures in the finance department, but never mind. But there's, we've tried to build up those rules and procedures to try to protect, but we, we've had some near misses. We work with the departments on this. The departments are all on board with trying to beef up their security so that we don't get scammed by some bad fake person saying that they are somebody else. But the vendor self-serve would essentially allow vendors to go in and maintain their own account. So they would have to register with their taxpayer ID number, which we confirm with IRS, and then they could put in their own banking information and change the banking information. This is not going to guarantee that something still will not happen, but it's certainly a big step toward improving the process that we have now. I put inside the actual budget document an article on the City of Chandler of how they were scammed. And this would help to bring the procurement department into an electronic mode from procure to pay, so that would certainly benefit them. And overall, in spite of these new initiatives from me, there's still a $32,000 reduction to the bottom line because of an increase in the special district charges. The HR department includes reclassification of six positions. They are, again, as mentioned earlier, the HR techs to HR tech seniors. It includes moving the generalist to an analyst, and got some bullet points there, the reasons why. It would be budget neutral to the EBT fund for those to occur, and for the generalist to the analyst, it would cost the general fund about $1,000. And they also have a request for a reclassification to an office assistant senior from an office assistant. Again, it would be budget neutral to the EBT and would be about $700, $800 to the general fund. And I won't go over the specific reasons there that they've noted, but they've supported their initiative, and you can clearly look at it in greater detail within your budget book. Economic development includes the replenishment of the enterprise funds. It includes the, a vehicle that would be assigned to that department, and as mentioned on the outset with Mike's introduction, it does include a, another position for half the year. The, I have a bullet point there that there will be an additional $11,000 worth of program costs to go into the tentative budget. I inadvertently removed those during our budget prep. That includes $7,500. It's basically moving items from their current advertisement budget down into program budgets to identify as recruitment and site visits, meetings, and then work on business retention. Development services, okay, I think I can get this all right, but if not, we certainly have department ads that are here for support and for any of these initiatives. I'll start with the most difficult concept for me initially was this department is proposing, along with Public Health Department, to consolidate abatement efforts. Well, what happened is the costs that are currently being borne by the environmental health portion of this would move over into another fund. There would not need to be any fee increases. It would incorporate using the dollar that's currently allocated in EQ for this over to this other fund, and the operating cost of basically remediating some of these violations would be paid for out of these funds, these consolidated funds. The zoning inspector position would be added and would be accounted for in the P&amp;Z budget. But a zoning inspector position is requested in order to have sufficient persons, a person there responsible for this division, to take on those increased workloads from the Public Health Department.
Good overall?
Okay. The next section, just P&amp;Z, there's a reclassification, a couple of reclassifications in there, but basically a request to move an office assistant senior to a specialist. It's budget neutral from revenues that are projected and that they're hitting their projections. There's also a reclassification of a permit tech back to an office assistant senior in order to align the duties that that person is actually performing with the job description. And again, budget neutral, they're just moving it from one job title to another, basically. And that position is also, just so you know, that it's split funded in all of the development services divisions. And I just spoke about the zoning inspector. P&amp;Z includes additional revenue that's anticipated. That is based and predicated upon some of the economic development probables that are in the works right now, as well as additional commercial development and allowing that to come to fruition. It provides some monies in there that are basically holding places in the event that we need to outsource to expedite some of this for commercial, then they would have the ability to do that. The automation fund includes their, some additional software that would aid in the permitting process, and then some equipment replacement. For this, this unit, for both P&amp;Z and the building inspection, I've included some of their performance measures, just on your PowerPoint, so you can see some of the workloads that they're, and the projections that they're looking at. With building inspection, quite similar to P&amp;Z, it's based upon the economic development and the commercial development that's, should be coming to fruition. There is a change that's being requested. There's currently an IGA with Colorado City where we have a temporary staff person employed to coordinate those building inspection services in that area. Based upon their actual activity that's coming through the doors, they would like to increase that from a temporary person to a part-time building inspector too, just for that area. We are projecting that that would be budget neutral from twofold, from reallocating the temporary salaries line item combined with increased permit revenue. Building inspection also includes a couple of other positions. It would add a combination building inspector two position, and that position is quite a bit more complex. But again, budget neutral, if activity occurs, plans examiner is comparable. It would only be a position that would be approved and advertised for hire and hired if the business demands required that there was an elevated development activity, basically. And on this slide, it includes the measurements for activity in the building permit division. Under the EQ division, theirs is basically, their large items are capital plans, and they've noted that they have a carryover of the scale house that would be located at the, or relocated from the place it is, its syrup out landfill, to another location there. The gas and flare system, and then the improvements that are being made at Mojave Valley landfill. We talked about the abatement a little bit. This one specifically addresses their emergency response to wastewater issues. And then, again, a reminder that we would like to, recommending to invoke use of the flexibility language and transfer a million dollars from this fund for one-time uses.
Madam Chairman, I need to make a correction for the board, that I said that that monies would more than likely come from closure, post-closure. It's possible that the landfill tire fund is in a better position to go ahead and provide that, that million dollars. And so if we could just include that there is some flexibility with the board's consideration to utilize the waste tire fund instead of the, in fact, finance might have it down as a waste tire fund. It might have been just my mistake. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you. In flood control, they've got about $3.5 million capital plan. It includes their Phase Two of improvements on Grace Neal, some channel improvements, some smaller projects, upgrades to their alert system, and then the standard types of land purchases, acquisitions, and design to mitigate areas that have issues with drainage. Public Health Department, as you well know, consists of a multitude of programs that are related to them providing nutrition and health opportunities and improvements in each of our communities. The most notable items within their budget was a $14,000 increase in the senior programs, and I believe that that was associated with the cost in Golden Shores. Right? Okay. The accreditation budget includes their reaccreditation costs, and as part of that, they have to update their community health plan. They also have within one of the programs to reclassify a health education specialist one to a two, which then would allow that person to be the program coordinator and have direct responsibilities over that program. The environmental, the PHEP grant includes satellite phones, so there's not any significant change in that program. And then again, combine some of the abatement programs with development services code enforcement.
I have a question.
Supervisor Gould, go ahead.
Coral, when we talk about satellite phones, are we talking about phones for satellite offices, or are we communicating with satellites?
I don't remember. It's been two days since I read that piece, and it was... I can look it up real soon.
Good morning, Denise.
Good morning, thank you. I'm actually going to have Melissa Palmer respond to this question, just because I feel like she has more detailed information that she can provide, so.
Fine. Good morning.
The satellite phones are actually in place throughout Mojave County in case our phone lines go down in the event of an emergency.
Okay.
So it actually connects to the satellites. We had one replaced last year. We need another one replaced. I believe it's in the Havasu office. I think that's where it's going to be replaced at.
So they're for emergency use?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you, madam.
Madam Chairman, have a question.
Supervisor Angus.
The teen pregnancy prevention reclassification, aren't these, these are grant programs?
That is correct, yes.
So this just, we, it's a formality? We do it, and, but it's still paid for all by grants?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we're nearing the end of some of this. Public Works. So this is a huge, huge organization, obviously, so we've got a little bit to go through, but I've identified some of the major points that are within each of their division budgets. The roads department has about a $2.5 million capital plan, and there's a variety of equipment in there, construction brooms, water trucks, dump trucks, pickups, and other replacement equipment. It's detailed in the budget documents as all of these plans are. So if there's anything that you want me to go over, I still might be stumped, Supervisor Gould, on some of the details, but I try to get a lot of it in the head and retain so that I have a good idea of what they're requesting. Traffic control includes a little bit of additional equipment and replacements. The engineering division includes $2.4 million overall. It does include about $2 million in road projects. The other amount is for vehicle replacements and some software. The software would certainly help the department reduce some, some risk when they're trying to establish signage on curved roads, or the curves in the roads. Of note, the portion of the vehicle replacement that was estimated for the Public Works Director will actually be reduced from about $38,000 to $30,000. We'll have that wrapped into your tentative budget. The projects I have listed on the next slide, that was the $2 million in the road projects. The Apache Road Phase Two is noted as construction. Some of these are listed as stabilization. And then, the last one, number nine, Cottonwood Road, I believe that's stabilization and it's $400,000. I bring that to your attention in that the books that we prepared, that Cottonwood Road was actually, did not appear on the line item. It just said number nine for $400,000. So that's what it is. In the parks division of Public Works, the work there, or the additional items, if you will, are basically with Davis Camp and then community parks. At Davis Camp, they would like to add another grounds worker due to their ongoing maintenance needs. They have some equipment in there that they need to replace, and they would like to add Wi-Fi infrastructure to that area. The $465,000 capital budget really is led by the Phase Three of the Water Master Plan, and that contract you actually approved on May 4th, I believe. The community parks includes, there's been a lot of work just completed at the Veterans Park, so this would include sod for that park. And then, they would like to add $57,000 to replace the playground equipment at Neil Butler Park and add sand in the base of that playground. That was previously slated for at least FY '22, and they would like to move that up to '21. Moving on to the water divisions, the GVID capital and plans are laid out on this slide that I prepared for you. I do need to change out the words inspection and maintenance of two 750,000 gallon tanks for install the third storage tank. for install the third storage tank. But otherwise, those were the highlights that we've got for GVID. The I-40 water includes some similar types of improvements, culvert crossing on Jaguar Road to provide access to a well. They have requested a small office and bathroom at a warehouse and would need to convert their well, well number nine, to a vertical hollow shaft motor. So we've got some additional investment into I-40. And I think by doing some of this, it resolves some other higher-cost items. The Public Works Erase Division wants to add two ruggedized laptops and software that we would then charge out or include in the IT department and then charge those back to the Erase Division. The Maintenance and Fleet Budget includes another shop computer, some pickup replacements, and then they're asking for a 15,000-pound hoist and reels for the Diesel Fuel Island. Their fleet portion of that includes the equipment identified here, a diagnostic vehicle scanner, a tracking software program for repairs and maintenance items, a tire balancer, a drill press, and a vehicle lift replacement. I believe that was a replacement. In their Vehicle Use Fund, it has slated 26 vehicles this coming year. We've added four of the vehicles for the probation office and three additional vehicles for the sheriff deputy positions. The Janitorial Division includes another crew member to be added mid-year. Again, that's affiliated with construction completion of the Superior Court project. And in prior years, balances, if you will, their fund balance in that fund, we've had it, we were seeing an increase in that each year, so we're proposing to bring back $157,000 back to the general fund that we've previously sent over there from the budgeted unspent The Facilities Budget, we've talked a little bit about this for the first two items. It does include some reclassifications, a civil engineer from an unregistered to a registered in order to be able to provide a heightened and more complex level of reviews to create construction scopes of work, to perform various analysis, drawings, and sketches is what they'd identified as to the reason for this request. They'd also like to provide a step increase adjustment to the engineering manager, and that would be based upon the expanded responsibilities that that person has taken on, their increase in workload, and the more complex projects that he's been working on. They've asked for a reclassification from a Facilities Grounds Worker Senior to a Lead Position, and that would also then require a new vehicle. Other items within their budget are basically equipment replacements, tools, some software that they would like to add in order to remotely monitor some of the HVAC systems, both at the Superior Court facility and then at some other county facilities. And Emergency Risk Management includes a satellite antenna system for Toad One. Want me to answer that one?
Sure.
And Risk Management wants to, or needs to purchase a decimal meter in order to comply with some OSHA requests.
And Toad One is?
He's not a frog.
Toad One is a vehicle, a command center, right?
Toad One was, I'll let Byron come down and tell you. It started out with the state. It was a gift from the state, and he can fill you in the rest of it. Thank you. So we got a gift that keeps on coming?
Essentially, that's right. Supervisor Gold, Toad One was originally acquired by the county, I think, in 2006. It was a vehicle that was purchased by Arizona Division of Emergency Management at that time, using Homeland Security funds. They purchased five of them to distribute in various areas of the county, and they were to be used as backup communications for major emergencies. And so, we acquired this when essentially it was paid for, for many years by the county, or by the state, rather. The county, all we had to do was just provide some service to it, and they actually owned the vehicle. We had an MOU with them. A couple of years ago, they decided they wanted to divest themselves of those vehicles, and they essentially provided it to us for free, signed it over to us, and the board accepted it. And so, now we essentially maintain it, and it's available to be deployed for any type of an emergency where we need additional communications capabilities. And it has, we have used it extensively in emergencies, both here and also in neighboring counties when they've requested mutual aid. And so, essentially, it provides us a satellite link when we need that capability for satellite internet or for other communications. It also serves as a node for a telephone network that we can essentially have with telephones centered on the command post. And it usually, one of the biggest benefits we've seen from it is when we had the issue, if you remember, a year or so ago, where we had the crash on the bridge at Colorado, on the Colorado River, where we had a number of people that were killed, that were drowned. And we were able to actually provide communications, radio communication, a link to our search and rescue teams all through the ravine there, south of the bridge, where there was no radio communication.
Sure, that's a dead spot right there. Yeah, I just was concerned that that was a nickname that the piece of equipment had picked up, as in being a loser.
Actually, we don't know where that came from. It was actually the state that decided to use the term Toad One, and the ones that they distributed out to the counties were called Toads, and they had one that was essentially a big RV that they used in Maricopa County, and that was called a Bullfrog.
Interesting.
So where'd that come from? We don't know.
It must predate Governor Ducey, because if it was Governor Ducey, it would have three names, like Stay Home, Be Safe, and Be Secure, or one of his other three-named divisions. Thank you, sir.
Yes, if anybody comes to this podium, I've touched it, that's all. Hold your hands together. The library is, there's not a lot of change in the library this year. They are structurally balanced, whereby the tax rate was adjusted several years ago. It seems to be working so far. Fortunately, as long as delinquent taxes do not increase, then we should be able to continue to provide services at the level right now. The initiatives that they do have include a vacuum, some digital DVR, fire protection, and then HVAC replacements. So the next two areas, these are really just for me to advise you. In June, I will be coming to you to update and have you adopt again the pension funding EORP is currently amortized over, the EORP is the Elected Official Retirement Plan. It is amortized right now about, over a longer period, with about 23 years remaining. We owe about $21, $22 million on that, or I shouldn't say owe. Our unfunded liability is about $22 million, and the rate that the county's contribution is about 61.5%, and it kind of depends on what plan an elected official is required to participate. But we're spending about a million and a half in that each year. PSPRS, in this sense, I've identified as the Sheriff's Office. The liability is now being amortized over a 20-year closed period with 17 years remaining. Our funding position of that has improved over this past year. We're up to almost 50% funded. We still have an unfunded liability of close to $25 million, and the annual cost for that is estimated to be about $2.7 million. The Corrections Officer Plan is fully funded. The reason I am bringing this up, not just to, you know, let you know again that you have this liability, but there is a proposal that's being developed right now. CSA staff is working on this, and they would like to ultimately, if you will, have PSPRS, the system, collectively refinance their pension liabilities, or allow them to serve as a bank, so that all of us as participants can refinance these liabilities to take advantage of the interest rates right now. So the interest rates for a pool that size could be in the range of 2%, possibly lower, and maybe a little bit higher. But that would save, I mean, that would resolve so many issues at the state level and county, city level, fire district levels, if that were to occur. I just want to give you a heads up about that. There could be other things that we consider if PSPRS's discussion with the state is a no. We don't want to get involved in any of that. We could possibly pool together as all participants on our own, like outside of PSPRS, to issue some pension liability refunding. And a third option would be if we needed to do that on our own. Reasons for this to not be favorable, it's a very unpleasant discussion, if you will, to talk about liabilities that you have associated with pension, long-term pensions. But if it translates into millions of dollars and there's some easier way to get that information out to the public, then it seems like it's a worthwhile discussion to have. So if that, as that comes around, I'm sure that CSA will be discussing that with supervisors. And at this point in time, with the conversations that I've had an opportunity to be included in, I very much support that.
Supervisor Gold?
Coral, that's currently an unfunded liability, not a debt, though. So essentially, you would be creating, making a debt out of an unfunded liability. And the other thing that you have to watch is that the natural tendency for humans to push things off, which is extending the term of the debt. It seems like when people refinance things, they never keep that debt the same length of time. You know, they have 17 years left on their mortgage. They don't get a new mortgage for 17 years. They get a new 30-year mortgage.
Yes.
You know, so you end up never paying the debt. So that would be my concern, switching it from an unfunded liability to an actual debt, is that that term would get extended.
I completely agree. In our, in Mojave County's case, so that absolutely might be one of the falling down points in a consolidated pool effort. We're going to get the most, the lowest interest rate if we pooled together, but I completely agree with you. Mojave County isn't interested in extending this for another 20 years. I mean, we'd like to get this paid off, paid down, so that we're now no longer have to pay that, the legacy rate, so we're actually paying for the pension cost.
Sure.
And that would be, I would think that that could be less than seven years.
Good. And I also wanted to make a statement, is I did not participate in the Elected Officials' Pension Program while I was in the legislature, so it's not a conflict of interest for me to vote on anything, because it does not personally affect me. Thank you.
Madam Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
I think it's important to let the board know the order of magnitude of the interest change that could be potentially realized.
That's true. That is definitely true, that there's a huge savings. So we would estimate that for Mojave County, it could be $600,000 a year, so.
So currently, we're paying what interest rate on this money?
Right now, it's about 7.3%.
So 7.3% is what we're being charged right now. At least currently, if the board remembers, we, at one time, several years ago, proposed at least for consideration a sales tax to pay for the unfunded liability, and that wasn't done. So instead, administration decided to look at paying this off over time and including it in the cost of doing business. And pay it, like Coral said, on the one pension liability, it was like 1.6 million a year on the other one, this is slightly more. So we understood, taking that on, that it would be over an extended period of time, like 20 years is what it ended up being, and that's what we based our calculations on, even though the interest rate was considerable. So like Coral mentioned, we certainly don't want to get in to where we're extending our liability time for paying off the unfunded liability. But there is considerable amount of savings that could be realized by the board, either through accelerating our payment, but we would need a revenue stream to be able to do that, or by refinancing. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Supervisor Gold?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. If there's no debt, and it's an unfunded liability, how does it have interest?
So the actuarial reports, in order for PSPRS to be able to compensate people as planned, they have targeted that they would earn 7.3% interest on their investment with the assets that they have, that they invest. In the years when they do not earn a rate of return of 7.3%, then your rates go up, so the counties, cities, districts get to pay for the difference in those costs. So the 7.3% is the target that they have said that they would earn. It used to be even higher. They've come down with that. But as soon as they drop their target, then our costs go up. So the only way to get out of that is actually to provide the full amount of money, so that they're earning 2% or 3% on the money, and we get rid of this 7.3 actuarial assumption.
So they're charging us because they don't make their revenue projection?
Yes, in essence.
It's interesting, because it was their bad decisions that have put us in the position that we're in today.
Well, not to defend them entirely or argue with you whatsoever, but I think some of it was the, just the crash in the economy in 2008, and not necessarily a poor decision. Some of it was their investment in real estate was, is my understanding, pretty heavy, and it's affiliated with the market value of that real estate, so if the value fell, then our liability just increased.
You saw the same problem with the dot-com bubble bursting also, though. So it's a history of these kind of things.
Yeah.
This is opinion, and it's, it doesn't require a comment.
You're allowed, I'm not.
You don't want to make one?
Yep, you're allowed, I'm not.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Angus?
Madam Chair.
Okay. So after this thing, which, you know, because you're in the markets, and that's a gamble, but they didn't want to lose, there was no risk for them losing, because they'd come back to us and all of that. But that changed, right? How they invest their money now, they've changed that.
Yes.
It has, it's, there's a lot more oversight, and they can only go into certain things. They can't gamble like they did back then.
Derivatives.
Supervisor Johnson, go ahead.
I was going to stay out of this till Ms. Coral decided to defend them, but I have a real problem with the state having us go into the retirement system with, which had no oversight. And as we said before, some people were allowed to opt out, which made it smaller in the contributions and hurt us overall. And also, if they had real estate that was invested in, wouldn't that be going up, so they should be collecting more money on that like anybody else's would?
So Supervisor Johnson, the answer to that is yes, and I think a couple of the years, they posted that they had earned 10% on the return, rather than, they had exceeded their market or their target. So that would actually be the opposite of that. But they do it over like a seven-year smoothing, so if you're adding, you know, 2% or 3% loss here and a 2% or 3% gain in a couple of other years, then it still averages out, if that makes sense.
Yes, that makes sense, but it's just their reckless way they handle the funds that has done it to us. That's all.
Okay, thank you. I think Coral, right now, we're going to take a five-minute break, if you don't mind? Yes. Yes.
All right.
I think we're ready to call the meeting back to order. Ready or not? Okay, I think we're all here. If you want to continue, Ms. Lloyd.
Yes, thank you, and I'm very near the end, thankfully. TV district.
Baptist preacher near the end.
We talked about a little bit opening this up, and it's just something that you're all going to have to make a decision about. Building construction funds, again, we've talked about that. And what we're proposing with those one-time funds. I'd like to touch a little bit on a five-year outlook. So if I were in your shoes, having to make decisions about this, I would be somewhat concerned with where we are, where do we think we're going. So, Sonia, help me work on this five-year outlook. And we made some adjustments in it, but basically, on this next slide, a bunch of numbers. But we basically included about a 3%, 3.7% increase in the current estimated amounts for the budget next year. If in '22, we have a little bit less, we dropped that down to about 3% to 3.2% growth, you're still right side. You've got an excess where, based upon a 2.5% increase in overall cost to the county, you would have revenue that exceeds your expenditures. So we pared that down going out for the next five years. And in year five, if we only had a 1.5% growth in revenue, the cost of services would absolutely exceed the revenue coming in, and you would have about a million-dollar loss in the general fund. So I just wanted to just kind of present you with that information, that if everything else remained the same, you kept the exact same tax rates, state shared revenue was similar in the way that it's currently provided to each of the counties in participation within that. If assessed values essentially declined by that amount over the period of years, we would have a lot to worry about by year five. But otherwise, the projection would look pretty good. If costs escalated up to a 5% increase annually, then the projected problem would happen in year three or four. But overall, that's kind of your long-term outlook. In summary, again, you have a lot of opportunities from the financial perspective to face the future challenges that may be coming and to look for sustainability measures with your tax rate that's significantly below the maximum and not having a current sales tax. Funds from all of those resources could be utilized for however the board so chose, but it could address some of the needs that you will hear, particularly from some of the other departments, public safety areas, court areas, and as increased workloads occur in other departments. So in conclusion, with staff making a recommendation to you and putting this budget together, we do realize the importance of bringing to you and making recommendations that are responsive to the needs and priorities that you've laid out. Do a budget that seems to be affordable, that it sufficiently pays for the emerging needs, if you will, takes a look at those liabilities, and then also still allows you to have opportunities throughout your region. So with that, I will close and allow everyone an opportunity to speak about their budget. The timeline, again, will be that we would look for a tentative budget adoption in June and then have our final budget hearings, the first meeting in August with the tax rates adopted, the second meeting of August.
Okay, thank you very much. And now I'll go to each one of the supervisors for any comments, and then the elected officials. So starting now with Supervisor Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I can give my notes here. Why is the Development Services not filling a needed position immediately and waiting until January?
Okay, that question was for Development Services, and Director Walsh is heading to the podium to provide us with that answer.
Madam Chair, can I go on to the -- or go on to somebody else? I've got a call I just have to take.
Well, actually, Tim's at the podium now, so.
I've got to answer this call, though.
All right. We'll come back with that one. Okay, Supervisor Gold, do you have any questions or comments?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I was curious on the county attorney, reduction of a full-time civil attorney to a part-time attorney, does that mean that that attorney is only now going to be working part-time? Or is his salary going to be picked up, the other half of his salary picked up by some other fund?
So yes, that's my understanding, that attorney would be working part-time.
Interesting. Thank you.
Okay, Supervisor Angus.
Thank you. First, I want to thank the Treasurer's Office for not keeping their budget the same. I do have a couple of questions. The new word for the year is parity. And I have a question because the courts want some of their departments to be on par, parity par, with what the county makes. So my question is this, and I asked Judge Gertler before the meeting, how many people, like, let's say they're HR director, what is the staff? And he said about 200. And it was the same thing for the fight. They want to do this for, I think, the HR and the finance director. But how many people do you, I mean, that you have to do these budgets for? I mean, what is the full employment number for the county?
So that all employees, I believe that the county has about 1,300 employees.
Right.
And we do, we're responsible for all of them, including the courts.
Right, including the courts. So, and just, you know, just a question, but why does the courts feel that their financial people should be on the same par with the county when, you know, they oversee a smaller budget and, you know, less, I'm not going to say less work, because work is work, but less employees, less staff? I don't know if that's a question for you or for when we get around to it, but I kind of have, that's the first time we've heard that word, that that's how they want to raise. I'm not against maybe upping. I know I've heard over the years that the courts, you know, they have salary issues. I get it, but I just have a problem with that parity, parity thing. Just a few little questions as we went through. CSA is having that big of an increase, $61,000 increase? Or is that the whole thing?
That was the whole thing.
That's the whole thing. And so how much is the increase?
Let me look at that.
And that's, and that's not in addition to the building? You can get, you can get back to me because I have, I have a little bit of an issue with that. Now, we first talked about the animal shelter. When we did it, when we, when we took it in, we were told that we would be able to do this for about as much or less, and now we're being told that you need a half a million dollars more?
Madam Chairman, maybe I can answer that.
Sure, go ahead.
First of all, I want to separate two things. One's operation of the animal shelter, and the other one is the construction of a new facility. I do want to brag a little bit and say the operation of the animal shelter, we're actually doing it for less money than what was contracted. And so, and I believe we're having a lot of success. So now I want to switch gears to the animal shelter facility. We went out to bid for a design bid, a design-build team. And the design-build team came in and they gave us a qualification proposal, and we, teams, and we selected one. And then we started talking and developing a scope of work with them and this one individual company, because we believed that that's the one we were going to go with. And we gave them a not-to-exceed budget of $2 million. If you recall, when I first came to the board, I asked for $3 million for an animal shelter, and the board agreed to $2 million. And that was partially because we had other things to fund. We wanted to look at fully funding the courthouse remodel and have enough money to do, finish the existing courthouse. In our negotiations, we went to a technical proposal where they reviewed the site and they identified certain things that were necessary to make the project work. And that included off-site and on-site improvements. And that was higher than what was anticipated. Plus, we believe that the design-build firm provided us with a building we didn't like for costs that we couldn't afford. And they underperformed, so we terminated our agreement with them. We now recognize, I believe we can do a building for $2 million, but there is sufficient funds in our capital fund to augment that project budget. And so I thought it would be prudent to try to ensure that we get the facility that we want there, given the successes that we're experiencing, and allow the board to make a business decision to whether they want to take my recommendation and add another half a million dollars to the project budget. That would be what I would recommend the board do.
Okay, thank you. And this is, and I don't, I don't mean this disrespectfully or snarky or anything, but we said $2 million. So what we're hearing now is.
We can do it for two, we can build a building for $2 million.
Right, so it's, you know, it's, it's what we had come up with. And, you know, when you, if I went and bought a house and was going to, you know, contract for a house, and I said $2 million, if my, if my contractor came back and said, you know, half a million and more, it would be, it would be a little shocking. I just, I just have an issue because we said $2 million, and I don't remember really seeing much of what we could have gotten for $2 million.
And Madam Chairman, one of the things that, one advantage that we, we did experience by going to a technical proposal, we found that that particular site didn't have adequate electrical facilities to support the use, the building. So electrical would have to be brought over. A lot of the utilities would have to be brought over at considerable cost. The city would require that we do some road improvements and extend the sidewalk all the way, it was shorted on the senior, on the existing county facilities there, not only extended all the way past our project, but finished what we didn't finish on next to the other county facilities, which are close to airway. So we had that unanticipated cost. And, you know, that, it would just make the project budget more comfortable where we'd have a full $2 million put into floor space and animal, animal shelter.
Hopefully, if we do this again, like, all of those unknowns that, you know, we didn't know then, when we were picking the site, you know, we assumed that all of these things were known when we picked the site. But, you know, I understand, I understand you're doing your job. I just, I just have a problem when it comes back so much more after we voted on a hard number. But that's just me.
So one thing that the, that Mr. Hendricks didn't bring up is with these improvements increases the value of the rest of the land that the county owns, and, you know, that's, that's an added plus for the unfortunate news that it was more expensive to bring utilities in.
Okay, and, and back to the operations. So you, it was kind of went through quickly, but you said the new agreement with Kingman. What is the new agreement with Kingman?
Oh, I'm glad you brought that up. The board was adamant, and you all were, that, and I reported that I believe that Kingman was grossly underfunding our animal shelter facility. So Finance did a wonderful job on analyzing our costs. And then we looked at allocating by number of animals, you know, doing a pro-rata share for Kingman. And currently, we sent an agreement over to Kingman, and instead of the, and don't hold me to these exact numbers, roughly $40,000 a year, we're going to be charging them, in essence, $110,000 a year for services. And then that's, I think if that hasn't gone to the council, it's going to go to the council shortly. I thought it had already gone to the council. Once we get it back, we'll put it for the board to execute.
Very good, thank you for doing that. That was a very important piece of this whole new operation. A quick question about the new software for the assessor, the just appraise. Does it have recurring licensing fees? I just want to make sure that you're not, not going to come back with, you know, we need this now. I'm sure you've taken it into consideration. I just wanted it on the record that you've taken that in and you have budgeted for it.
Yes.
Okay. And it just, this is a big question, but for public health, we didn't really talk about their unexpected expenditures for the COVID. And we will, we're going to get money. We're going to get reimbursed for a lot of things, I hope, we're told. And I assume the county is working to get all of that stuff that the state and the federal government is offering?
Madam Chairman, Supervisor Angus. One of the things that we did right is we partnered Finance, emergency management and risk management, and the Health Department. So with charge that they would capture the costs that we're expending so that if there is, there is reimbursement out there so that we could maximize the amount of reimbursement we get for this COVID, whatever is of it.
And if that money comes in, where does it go?
I, I assumed it went back to the general fund. Do you want to help me out on that, Coral?
So for currently, it depends on which fiscal year it happens. If we were actually to receive a reimbursement this year, then we would net that against those expenses. But it's likely to be next year, and that's where we will end up placing that.
And those are general fund expenses, correct?
Yeah.
So we expect to receive, because, you know, we, we didn't really hear any of the impacts from what we've spent thus far. And I'm sure it's substantial.
So we submitted a report, I should say Judy actually submitted the report last Friday, or actually, I think it was Wednesday, but we had it was due on Friday. So that was about $80,000 in hard cost. And then we've sent in a revision that includes about $300,000 because that would include, initially, we're not allowed to include our regular paid compensation, only overtime, if you will. So the revision was sent in to cover all of the hours of the people who have been working on the item.
And we'll be updated on that because that's, again, another unknown. And if there is a second spike, which we hope doesn't happen, then we will have unexpected expenses as well. So it's nice that we have all this stuff that we are planning for, but there's always that thing hanging behind us that it can all kind of crash. And one more thing, Sheriff Schuster, you have enough for your jail this year?
I think we're going to be calling him up.
Okay.
We'll be talking to each one of the directors and elected officials. You're welcome. Okay, now, where were we? Supervisor Watson.
Thank you, Chairman Bishop. This appears to be my exit budget. I have some concerns about our organizational degradation. And I'll start with our contingency fee at funds at around 3% to 4%. It seemed extremely low to me. And we've just experienced this pandemic issue. Ms. Lloyd, what would you feel comfortable with at the contingency funds at 5% or 6%? I would recommend 10%, but you're the comfort level that, that we go to.
You're spot on, you're spot on. That's exactly what I would recommend between 5% and 10% would be, should be adequate.
So we're at 3 for 4 currently, but we really need to be between 5 and 10. Is that correct?
In my opinion.
Thank you. That's one part. I believe at the end of this session that we'll probably end up with the lowest combined tax rate for Mojave County in comparison with our cohorts on medium counties. Will we continue to reflect that with this budget?
Yes, sir.
So our cohorts are Yabapai County, Coconino County, Yuma County. And so it appears that we're going to continue to be at the lowest combined tax rate of those medium counties. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
This was just, this is just an observation that I've made over the years, but as a whole, Mojave County employees earn less than those cohorts in those counties also. But that's just my observation. I don't know that for a fact. But I do know that many of our directors, many of our employees do not make the same amount of money that those cohorts do. So that's, that's just an observation, and, and I can't guarantee that fact. Another item that brings a great deal of concern to me are our unfunded liabilities, which is probably close to $55 million. With EORP at $21 million, with PS, PRS at $25 million, and our tax cases at $5 million, would that be fairly close?
That is, that is fairly close. You could probably add additional, up to, for the tax cases in addition of $5 million.
Another $5 million?
Yep.
So that would bring our possibilities then to close to $60 million in unfunded man, possibilities.
Right.
Thank you. I also have a concern for the coroner's office in operation. We currently are going through a new contract with that organization, the doctor, the coroner's office. But we continue to ignore the need for a facility that we could bring that in-house. Would that be in the neighborhood of $2 to $3 million or more?
I don't remember what the facility costs were for us.
Madam Chairman, Supervisor.
But I would imagine so.
You're, you're spot on on that. That cost is between 2 and 3 million.
Okay, thank you, thank you. And in my continued concern for our organizational degradation, we continue to ignore the wear and tear on all our buildings, otherwise known in the business world as depreciation. It occurs every day, every year. And if not addressed soon, many of our buildings that are newly built within the last five to 10 years will start showing a great deal of degradation. I think that we should really be taking a very hard look at our old facilities in Mojave Valley, Lake Avenue City, and Bullhead City. And I'm not going to ask you for those numbers, but I do recognize that those facilities are in great need. And I'll address that with the sheriff and those people when they get here. And that pretty much sums up my concerns. But I do need to stress to the board members that will be continuing as elected officials in the future that these items are of huge concern. If they're not addressed, they will turn around and bite you, and they will bite you in a very big way. The difference between the minimum rate and the maximum rate of $2.44 cannot be consumed in one bite, as I understand it. That if we were to go to our maximum rate of $2.44, that that only can be done in several incremental years. Is that correct?
I believe that the law changed to, it would take a unanimous board to raise it to the maximum, or anything above 15. So up to three members of the board can make an adjustment up to 15%. And once that, an increase would increase from 15% up to the maximum would require a unanimous vote, I believe.
A unanimous vote of the board. So in summing, I'm warning the future boards and administration that there are a number of concerns that are long-term that really need to be addressed. And I'm hoping that we'll take those in consideration in this budget year and also the subsequent budget years. But if not addressed, they will bite you. And Chairman, thank you.
Thank you very much. And this, this will be your last budget workshop, so we appreciate everything that you've said and warned us about going into the future. Supervisor Johnson, are you available to make comments at this time?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I apologize, but following the stay-at-home order, I have doctors' calls that I must take. I'll just defer mine till after the elected officials because I have one more call coming. Thank you.
Okay. Let me check on the time. It's six minutes until our COVID meeting, so I think we can adjourn for now, if this is a good time, Coral, and then bring it back for the elected officials to make their comments, and then the courts, and then department heads, so.
Adjournment or recess?
Well, I guess it would be a recess. So we'll reconvene after the COVID-19 meeting.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I, probably a lot of elected officials haven't gone through the COVID meetings. If, if not, they're not very long. They, they usually wrap up fairly quickly, so it may be that we'll be reconvening shortly. And did, did the chairman want to entertain starting that, that now with the health? No, you can't, I'm sorry.
Sorry. You can't start early, so we have to wait till red noon.
Gotcha, thank you.
Okay, so we are in recess, and we'll reconvene after the COVID-19. One second, Supervisor Angus has something.
Oh, I just, just real fast, did I miss the discussion about the TV district? It's when we came back from the break, and the, and the first thing you said was you'll have to make hard decisions. That was the last thing, but I don't think we talked about it. Did I miss that? Do you remember that?
There were about five pages that weren't hit.
Yeah.
We can bring that up after, after the meeting. Okay, so we are on recess until 12 o'clock noon, when we'll start the COVID meeting, which is four minutes away.